All right.
I'll check you after me.
Okay, we welcome you and call order the Port Orchard City Council Work Study Session for September 17th. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I just want to remind everybody this evening that this is a council work study session. We don't have public comment at a work study session. And the purpose of a work study session, we have three items on the agenda tonight, and it's to the staff and I to provide information to the city council and get your questions answered before any potential actions on items for the future council meeting. So with that, our first item this evening is a proposed ban on the sales of puppies and kittens in the city of Port Orchard. And it says council, so I'm not sure, so no staff is involved in this. All right, so it appears there's a staff report, maybe I'll read it into the record then. The issue, the city has been approached by citizens and organizations asking if they could include the ban on sales of puppies and kittens within Port Orchard municipal code. Background is on October 4th, 2019 Theresa Donnelly reached out to the city clerk asking to put the puppy mill sales, sales of puppies and kittens initiative back on the city's agenda. On August 13th, 2019, the clerk asked if council would consider the ban of sales of puppies and kittens. Council directors decided to be brought forward to you tonight. The council member Kucharny asked to see an estimate of staffing and attorney time to bring this item forward through its completion. So I think in that effort, and I'm not sure, the finest directors, here's the thing, Brandy, were you able to capture that information? I know Noah was working on it. Did he ever put it in? And we were gonna do it on the basis of any action we brought forward, but I don't see that in our packet, so I apologize, Councilmember Kucharny. So, Councilmember Kucharny?
I would be happy to start the discussion. And I believe one of the citizens group that brought this forward produced, and Scott, maybe you can help me with this, produced a redlined potential ordinance for us. Is that where that came from? I have some other issues regarding that, the way it came forward. But besides that, reading this, it takes us back to exactly where we were a year and a half ago, when council thought if we defined what a puppy mill was, or puppy and kitty mill was, and we banned the sale of those animals in the city. That's basically what this does. It's added some definitions. My comments on it are, one of the definitions that has been added is number 21, offer for adoption. And my concern on this, it says offered for adoption means to allow showcasing of animals for adoption by bona fide animal care and control agencies as defined under RCW 1652-011, or animal rescue groups where adoption is handled in person by that agency. When we did, or at least when I did, my due diligence when this was before us, we found out that rescue groups are not a regulated industry at all. And my position is, is if we're going to ban puppy mills, which is part of a regulated industry, I would like to see the rescue piece of this deleted. So I would leave the adoption there, but I would just stop it after the reference to the RCW. And then my other comment is under 716080 operations and requirements, and it's item number seven. And it reads ownership of animals offered, and this is directly out of our current code. It says ownership of animals offered for sale, the owner manager of the pet shop shall maintain written documentation of the source of all animals. I would like that to read, ownership of animals offered for sale or adoption, the owner manager of the pet store shall maintain, the manager owner of the pet store, or the animal control agency as defined by the RCW. I would like to have any animal in the city that's being exchanged have the source of how that particular group obtained the animal. Other than that, I think it's fine. I have no problem moving forward with this. I would like our attorney to review the wherases. I didn't think they were necessarily all appropriate. And I wasn't sure they were exactly statements we would want to make. But I think that the attorney can look at that and staff can look at that. But those were the two things that I wanted to bring up, was to eliminate rescue animals, or the rescue groups from being allowed to adopt, and add that the animal control agencies have to provide source documentation for their animals.
What would that look like? So they find a stray dog on the street, there's after documentation.
Yeah, that's what I would assume, you know, found the animal, you know, in Bury, like Brooklyn. Or received the animal from Hurricane Harvey, you know, wherever they got the animals, so that the owner knows, you know, the potential new puppy mom and dad know the origin of that animal. And I'm assuming that the control agencies maintain that information anyway. I wouldn't assume that it would be worrisome.
So, we do an annual event, Kitty Hall, here in the council chambers, once a year. We did that a few weeks ago. It was very successful to adopt kittens from the Humane Society.
Right.
So, I'm not hearing anything that would prevent us from doing that. We just need the source of those kittens.
Kittens, right.
Any questions or comments?
No, I agree with what you're saying. I just wanted clarification on the first point, which you were talking about, oh, I guess it's item, offer for adoption?
Right, definition 21.
Okay, where were you gonna stop after the, where control agencies?
After the RCW.
After the RCW.
After the RCW, okay.
You just ended there.
Okay.
Are you capturing this, Brandy?
Anyway, that's just what I wanted to put up for discussion.
Okay, that's fine. The only thing that I heard that was worrisome, and this may not be an issue that we have to worry about, but it has happened that some places there are organizations forming their own nonprofits, which then rescue and place their own animals raised in a puppy mill.
We're eliminating rescue animals.
Okay.
And it has to be an animal control group, and I did not look up.
1652-11?
Right.
Yeah.
We have the internet for that.
That's right.
That's why we employ an attorney.
Well, did you have more? No, I just wanted to raise that as a potential concern. I think that's one reason, though, where the language that said handled in person as opposed to adoptions that were handled, not in person.
I couldn't figure it out.
Okay.
I couldn't figure it out. And I know that I did quite a bit of due diligence on this when we looked at it before, and was surprised to find out that that was not a regulated industry at all.
Okay.
Are there comments or questions? Is there your final changes?
I'm okay to move it on to the attorney.
Okay. For her review, and then is it your desire to bring it back, first meeting in October, for more discussion, or are you prepared to have it on there as a business item? On the agenda as a business item?
I concur.
Seeing none, it's not after the attorney's had the chance to review what's here with the edits that were proposed here this evening. Okay? That's why I went first. That's why you went first? Okay. All right, we're on to our second item. And we've got, remember, Mr. Public, we've got maps and the timeline that I'm gonna be discussing here this evening. I'm primary, and remember, three of our four council members, or seven council members worked on the council when we took most of these actions. And actually, back when it started, I don't think anybody was in the council room besides Mr. Fawcett. So, the focus of my presentation tonight is gonna be primarily on the highlighted items or colored items on the agenda, so I'm gonna skip through some of the things that I don't think are relevant to the, you know, the global project or in particular the things too, which is, seem to be the area of concern, which is West Bay to Annapolis. So, in 1990, it was really the origin of the pedestrian pathway from the documents that we have here at the city. And it was really related to, we have a sea, we now have a new seawall and a Jersey barrier down in Annapolis, and it's about 30 feet or so long. And before that, the fog line went right off to the beach. And so, that's somewhat where the project started, or at least pedestrian improvements in that area. In 1998, the pedestrian pathway project was added to the city's transportation plan. In August of 2001, the Schitts up County published a mosquito fleets trail master plan and established the Bay Street pedestrian path as a project in that plan. In January 2002, Washington State Department of Transportation establishes a prospectus for the Bay Street path project with a width undefined. Fast forward to March of 2016.
2006.
2006, I'm sorry. Thanks for correcting me. The city council accepts a federal grant for $300,000 for design of the pedestrian pathway project. And at that point in time, the application says this path, it's five feet on average. It's back in the early days. Later, though, that same month and year, WashDOT establishes a prospectus for the project as two lanes, curb, gutter, sidewalks, bike lane, and it's 13 feet in width. I'm gonna fast forward to August of 2009. We advertised for a design phase for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project. And in November of that same year, 2009, the city council approved the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project design contract with Norm Olson and Associates. February 2010, WashDOT reestablishes the prospectus for the Bay Street pedestrian path project as two lanes for bikes and pedestrians at 14 feet in width. Jumping forward to May of that same year, 2010, city council work study session, Bay Street pedestrian pathway and 30% designs and art alternatives were presented to the city council. On July of 2010, the city applied for a grant to the Puget Sound Regional Council, and that's where we get federal dollars. The project is identified as a vital connection between two historic mosquito feet landings of Port Orchard and Annapolis. The project consists of a shared pedestrian and bicycle path of at least 12 feet. So 2011 and 2012 were very busy years, full of public process. In September of 2011, the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project, submittal shoreline development permit, application submittal with 236 property owners, surrounding property owners notified. In October of that same year, 2011, the city applied for a substantial shoreline development permit, reviewed under the State Environmental Policy Act, city has issued a mitigation of determination of nonsignificance with comments received from Folkerson, Sweeney, Shealy, Quisenberry, Ostrup, Kurtoni, and Steinman. In December of 2011, the state issued an Environmental Policy Act mitigation determination of nonsignificance with no comments received. In January of 2012, the city issued a public, a notice of a public hearing for a substantial shoreline development permit, conditional use permit, and a variance for the overwater structures. In February of 2012, a public hearing was held on these permits. In the same month, the hearing examiner issued a decision and recommendations for the project. Same month and year, a substantial shoreline development permit was filed with the Department of Ecology. In March of that same year, Ecology approved our shore, substantial shoreline development permit, conditional use permit, and a variance for the overwater structures. I believe at this point, we had all of our environmental permits in order for the pathway. In, on September of 2012, the city accepts $500,000 grant from the Department of Commerce for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway for the constructions of segments two and five. In June of 2013, the city council accepts a federal grant in an amount of $609,000 for the pedestrian pathway. And in August of that same year, 2013, we advertised for the right-of-way fees for the pedestrian pathway project. In November of 2013, the city council put Universal, our right-of-way agent at the time, Universal Field Services, on hold for their right-of-way path. At this time, in point in time, we had some right-of-way funding, no construction funding. The city council hadn't given direction on the exact route of the pathway, but we do have a prospectus that says the path will be 14 feet in wide, and from the Port Orchard ferry terminal to the exact, to Annapolis ferry terminal. In February of 2014, the city council approves the Bay Street pedestrian pathway precursor services with Universal Field Service. This task with our right-of-way agent was done, was determine the willingness of the five overwater homeowners to sell, and we paid for that process with local dollars, and I have the report here this evening. And the consensus of that report was we were able, we were able to share appraisals with all five property owners on this project. The general consensus on the project, with the exception of one property owner, is, one, the homeowners believe that the city will move ahead with the project, and two, for the right price, they're willing to negotiate with the city and relocate. In April of 2014, the city council accepts a $336,000 grant from the State Department of Commerce for the construction of section four of the pathway. And in May of 2014, Geo Engineers obtains our federal, state, and local approvals for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway. In 2014, Geo Engineers provided a summary of the Bay Street pedestrian pathway overwater impacts and mitigation. And in July of 2014, I jumped ahead, we received that report that I just spoke to, and I read into the record what the findings of that report were. August of 2014, we had a discussion of the Bay Street pedestrian, first discussion of the Bay Street pedestrian pathway alternatives for Phase Two. And I'll read these four alternatives into the record. And number one was to terminate the project, the federalized project at segment five, which is West Bay, and required repayment and the obligation of $300,000 and the deep obligation of any new funding. Alternative two is Bay Street, that, Bay Street one-way, is a one-way street, and to reclassify the Perry Avenue as a one-way street the opposite direction. Alternative number three was to construct a deviated pathway within the existing right-of-way, deviating being narrower than the 14-foot requirement. And alternative four was to construct a non-deviated pathway, and to, with the required removal of the five overwater structures. Okay, and in October of 2014, we published in the Port Orchard Independent, a public notification of a planned city council meeting to discuss the all four alternatives. I have a certified copy of that notice here. On October 2014, the city council had a meeting with the discussion of number two of the Bay Street pedestrian pathway and alternatives. And at that meeting, we had public comments from Williams, Jones, Vought, Katrell, Harmon, Passau, and Whittleton. I have an email that was read into the record at that council meeting, and it was from an Annapolis business owners. It says, "City council members, I respectfully request you read this statement before the citizens at this evening's city council meeting. I have a presence in the community, and I wish to remain anonymous, but would like this read in support of the pedestrian pathway project. My business location may invite negative comments of bias, and I don't want that skewing the issue. One of the biggest challenges facing Port Orchard is how to become a city of value that attracts professional businesses, becomes an attractive tourist locale, and invites quality citizens looking to take up residence and engage their lives in a progressive town. There is limited, there is limitless potential in Port Orchard, and tapping this potential will take dedication and sacrifice at times for the citizens and businesses currently here. The pedestrian pathway is a great step towards what is needed to create an environment that attracts the very people and businesses this city has been asking for. The hardest part is taking that action and taking on the costs and sacrifices head-on to achieve what the citizens verbally request, but this team, this time seem to continually be unwilling to support financially and logically. In this instance, the homes in question are old and are not, and are, or will soon become a maintenance challenge for the owners. As residents, as residents over water extremely high maintenance and in many cases environmental hazard, I understand the upfront anger and unwillingness to concede their homes. I would react similarly, similarly, in the same situation, but I, when I take the time to look logically at the scenario, I see an opportunity for the owners to remove themselves from high maintenance structures and to make an extremely positive impact in progressing our city. The city does not, does need to recognize the sacrifice by the owners and compensate them properly. However, the owners need to be realistic as well with what their expectations are for compensation. It would be a major step backwards not to continue with the progress of the pedestrian pathway, as every prosperous city has similar amenities to offer and entice individuals to frequent or relocate to. Our city has taken very little advantage of its outdoor opportunities to become that city which is attractive to people and businesses, looking for an area that can provide the type of environment that promotes the outdoor industry, professional businesses, and quality of life. There's great untapped potential in this area, is extremely popular, and continually used by bicyclists, skateboarders, runners, joggers, pet walkers, and walkers in general. The pathway tidies up our shoreline and provides amenity that allows our waterway to be appreciated, utilized, and safely accessed. It creates an attraction that promotes out-of-town people to frequent our town, patronize businesses, and speak highly of Port Orchard, and what Port Orchard has to offer. The pathway is overwhelming, is an overwhelmingly positive step in that direction. While eminent domain is typically frowned upon and misunderstood, it becomes a positive if the person affected sees the true advantage to all and gets on board with the progression of the city of Port Orchard. Our city desperately needs to focus on projects that add intrinsic value to a prosperous future. It is the responsibility of the mayor and the city council to move the city forward in a progressive manner, sometimes having to make decisions that in the short term may seem harsh or negative, but in the long run benefit every single person in Port Orchard. Each and every citizen can agree that they want the city to progress and prosper. It appears that the majority of the overwater owners are on board, except one committing to be part of that progress of our town. Progression back to the status quo is not an option the mayor or the city council or the citizens of Port Orchard can allow, afford to allow. The city of Port Orchard has floundered long enough with a stagnated mindset. People call, call them tough decisions. I don't believe in tough decisions. They're only decisions that are positive and progressive for the city, or negative and regressive. The elected mayor and council are expected to make positive and progressive decisions, and moving forward the pathway complements their obligation of creating a prosperous environment, economy, and the overall positive future for the city of Port Orchard. They were elected to do what is positive for the entire city of Port Orchard, and the reality is sometimes that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. I would ask the remaining owners to look logically at the situation and understand the overall impact this, his decision makes regarding the future success of the city and the opportunity presented. He plays an important role in moving, helping to move the city of Port Orchard forward, for the city to become what is desperately seeking. It will need to, it will take, it will take sacrifices, money, and good decisions and policy. The pathway is a good decision, a project of value, a positive step to a prosperous and vibrant city. The pedestrian pathway progression should be non-negotiable. Okay, with that, with that, those comments read into the record at the council meeting in October, the city council discussed the report from Universal Field Services regarding the five homeowners, five overwater homes. I will read the motion which I made. Councilmember Tonsu moved, and councilmember Child seconded the motion that the council prefers a non-deviated pathway. The city should enter into negotiations with the property owners to acquire the homes from those willing to sell, and in the event those homeowners do not wish to sell, we will pursue a deviated pathway in those areas. Councilmember Chang asked a question of the attorney. In response to Councilmember Chang's question in regards to condemnation, the inner attorney said the current motion on the floor does not involve condemnation, and it would not require a supermajority for the motion to pass. With the vote that evening passed six to one, with Councilmember Ashby being the dissenting vote, councilmembers Ashby's concerns were related to, one, funding, because this is a large capital project, and at this point, we didn't have funding for it, nor did we have, we had to resolve funding for the Tremont project yet, and we had a permitted project, and if we were to deviate from that permitted project, we would need to re-permit that project. So, that's my understanding of her dissenting vote.
May I comment at this point?
You certainly may.
I just want to share with my fellow council members that at the last meeting, it was suggested that I voted against eminent domain. We have never taken a vote about eminent domain regarding this project. My concern that evening was that if we accepted more federal money, we would have to pay it back, and we didn't have construction money yet. We did not know where that was coming from. As the mayor said, we had all of the permits we needed for the path, the 14-foot path. If we deviated from that, we did not know if we would be able to get it permitted. So I voted against the motion.
Okay, and I, as a former council member at that time, believed in 2014, we had the support of the Annapolis community, and that four of the five overwater homeowners were willing to sell. So based on that vote, Public Works and staff were directed to move ahead with a non-deviated pathway for Phase Two of the project. In July of the next year, 2015, the city was awarded $3.5 million from the connecting Washington funding. In July of, that same, that same month, we requested WashDOT for modifications to our environmental classification summary, and our NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project in Phase Two. In November of that same year, WashDOT approved our NC, ECS, and our NEPA for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project. In January of 2016, the council accepts $2.2 million in federal dollars for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway right-of-way. In July of 2016, the city purchased two of the overwater structures, Passau and Claire. And in this federalized process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dorsey, we had an appraisal. We, as the city in these federalized processes are required to pay all closing costs, the homeowners were compensated for, the residents were compensated for moving expense, and I believe even... believe even one of the tenants was paid six months of rent.
Three years.
Three years of rent. So there are very defined processes in these federal processes and we have a right-of-wage agent that handles these negotiations on our behalf to make sure that we comply with all aspects of these federal processes.
I think it's important to mention that there's been conversations about transparency in these matters and we're required, our right-of-wage agents are in the audience tonight, we're required to follow very stringent FHWA guidelines that involve conversations that are documented in the diary, Department of Transportation. There are agents in all these conversations and negotiations and they all have to be documented and before we can advertise for construction, Department of Transportation provides us a certification of that right-of-way so that they confirm that we legally possess what we need to construct. And the legal possession is either right-of-way easements or temporary construction easements. So if there's a perceived lack of willingness to have a conversation, it's unfortunate that that is the process that we have to adhere to.
So I'm going to fast forward to May of 2018 because the steps in, prior, in the middle there are really about construction of other segments of the pathway. And in May of 2018, the city advertised the continuation of the right-of-way phase for the Bay Street Pedestrian Path Project. And as we know from five years ago, that the direction from the council was to build a non-deviated pathway. In November of 2018, the city council approved the pedestrian pathway right-of-way continuation with Tierra. January 2019, it was really just a carry forward of the Connecting Washington money that's the three million dollars that we have remaining. We were able through the legislature to get a half a million dollars of that, fast-forwarded, and to help us with the Segment Three that we built through the Rockwell Park. In February, based on comments from citizens, in February of 2019, staff reached out to WashDOT to discuss alternatives to Jersey Barrier. And in August of this year, we reached out to Washington State and to confirm that the fourteen-foot minimum is the width for a multi-modal pathway, which is the case. So in hindsight, we should have done a better job in communicating with the public that we were moving forward on the pathway project when we re-engaged our right-of-wage agent in 2018. Nothing has changed from October 2014. The city council's directive was and still is to build a non-deviated pathway. That's a fourteen-foot pathway from the Port Orchard Ferry Terminal to the Annapolis Ferry Terminal. The city hasn't held any secret meetings. The only meetings that have been held within with myself, staff, representatives of Whiskey Gulch, and the attorneys representing Whiskey Gulch. The maps displayed here this evening, which I'll go over here in just a moment, represent the right-of-way needed to build a non-deviated pathway. These plans do involve buying overwater homes. If we can't purchase the one home whose homeowner has always stated he doesn't wish to sell, it's possible to accommodate that one home because the city owns the property across the street. I don't believe that's in the best interest of the project, the community, or the city at whole, but it is possible. I don't want to try to minimize the impacts to parking at Whiskey Gulch, but other than the loss of parking at Whiskey Gulch, in my opinion, the project has no adverse impacts to the businesses or commercial buildings in Annapolis. I do question though, the safety of the parking at Whiskey Gulch that backs into two-way traffic. I do have a rendering displayed tonight, I'll cover in a minute, that shows a pathway alternative that passes on the water side of Whiskey Gulch. The city has always been willing to consider this alternative, but we are aware of past uses on the site that may have contaminated the property. Environmental testing would need to be performed before we could seriously consider this idea. If we were to proceed with this idea, the city, not the property owner, would need to help harmless a potential contamination on the site. There would be a gifting of public funds issue if the city were to spend public dollars to clean up private property. On the other hand, if we knew the exact extent of the contamination, it could be possible to use our compensation as part of the cleanup effort. Until testing is completed, we don't know the extent of any potential contamination or if compensation would be sufficient to perform any necessary cleanup. Lastly, we have received a proposal from the attorney representing Whiskey Gulch, or excuse me, Annapolis Quay, also known as Whiskey Gulch, and we are diligently working on response to their proposal. Our anticipated advertisement date for the construction of the remaining segments of the pathway project is January of 2021. I'd like to talk a little bit about the maps we have here this evening next. So as you can see on the one wall, we have a rendering of, and we'll put all of this stuff up on our website tomorrow, I'm sure the board will have it up. And we have a linear timeline that our staff has worked on over here. This in your packet, it's the third page in is the proposed, the alternative that we put together for staff. And Mr. Dorsey, do you want to speak to any of the green lines that are in that drawing? Your staff prepared.
Oh, so what we've done is, so the Annapolis Quay has parking on the south side of the building and then additional parking on the west side of the building. If we were to maintain the multi-modal pathway standard for minimum radius because it's bike and pedestrian, the graphic basically shows deviating through that lot and basically doing a one-way in and one-way out to maximize the parking that's on that side. So that's basically, and then in the lower corner, you can see it without the imagery, it's a little clearer the number of parking stalls. So it's feasible. As you know, when we built Segment Three, the Quiz and Berry property had been previously how oil and heating and they did a voluntary cleanup plan because their site was contaminated. To maintain our schedule, they did a two-phase VCP. They cleaned the soil, remediated it under the twenty-foot easement, put in a physical barrier, and then we were able to build Segment Four, sorry, Four, which was the bridge and that piece that went a little bit to the west. And then they did their remaining remediation the next year. So we have a process in place that involves the Department of Ecology. We know it can be done. The biggest hurdle that we would have as a city on this, if the owner were willing to go down this path, would be, we already have an APE, which is an Area Potential Effect. That's a defined project boundary that we would have to amend. We would also have to reopen the environmental classification summary or the ECS. We'd also have to reopen the substantial shoreline development permit process because we're going to be going back towards the shoreline and we've got additional overwater shade and getting past the building. So it's feasible, but you know, this is kind of, the city would be taking on quite a bit of additional work and time to try to deviate this path at this time.
But just to be clear, that would only occur after it was determined that it's feasible to acquire that property because of cleanup, potential cleanup.
The steps would be that the owner would work with the Department of Ecology, Heather Vick, in the voluntary cleanup program, put a VCP together, and then once we have a commitment on that cleanup, then we can proceed with, you know, the acquisition phase of the easement. And then at the same time, we'd be working with WashDOT and with Nick's office on kind of the whole ECS, NEPA, shoreline, APE issue. A lot of acronyms.
You've got another green line, and I've seen minimum buffers.
Right, there's a, well, that's another.
Potential of the development.
Well, that's another issue that Nick can speak to is the property, other than for surface parking, is pretty much unbuildable, I guess. There's seventy-five foot in our shoreline master program. I don't think anything could ever be built on that.
Well, you have to get a variance to be able to do it, but that's going to require mitigation.
But you can only mitigate it down to, I thought it was the foot, only a footprint of an existing building, an existing building there, so.
Generally, yeah.
There are challenges.
Challenges to any development on that side, if I may say. Looking onto the next map, you can see these are the overwater structures and the shoreline just past West Bay, across from Perry Avenue. And the pieces of land that we need to acquire and why we want to acquire these overwater structures, primarily they're attached to the shoreline and if we start construction in front of those, we run the risk, you know, of damaging their attachment point to the shoreline. This Jones property, we know that we can slide far enough away from that if we had to facilitate.
And if I could speak there. So on the timeline, when you look at, maybe it was off the timeline because it was like nineteen eighty-eight. Yes, it was nineteen ninety-two. And so I think a lot of the confusion is that the original properties, the original homes were ninety percent in the right-of-way. And I've got, you know, this is a graphic from the vacation that was done in nineteen ninety-two, because I know that Mr. Jones had mentioned it in two thousand and fourteen. His understanding is that when that vacation happened, it took the property from his doorknob to the center of the road. It didn't. It took the property line that was, and you can see it on that exhibit, that back line, go up to the top, that heavy line, that was the original property line. The vacation simply took twenty-five feet and took it to the doorknob. So it really, the city in nineteen ninety-two could have done more of a, like a fifty-foot vacation, but the problem was the Perry Avenue and the houses on the other side of the street, they didn't have that room, so they did a twenty-five-foot vacation. The vacation created a zero front yard setback. It only moved the line going either through the middle of the house or the back of the house, basically to the doorknob and all the overwater structures. And that was consistent all the way through Mitchell Point to the east, so.
Moving forward to the next map, which is the last, second document in our packet. First building, as you're coming into Annapolis, which is the Osterman-Cumby Building. The black triangle you see is actually an encroachment in our right-of-way, so the building is actually sitting in our existing right-of-way. And the orange line is, delineates our pathway, our proposed pathway. We need to acquire the green triangle from them and as we experienced with the Marley Apartments, when we constructed the pathway, we need to clear any encroachments we have in this federalized process. So we're going to need to work with this property owner for them to acquire the triangle property that's sitting in our right-of-way, in the city's right-of-way, and in turn, we have a similar sized piece of property that we need to obtain from them. As you pass to Tony's property, the next one is, there is a swath of right-of-way you need to acquire and they have a, their entryway has a cover on it and it's unknown at this point whether we'll need to modify or they'll need to modify that encroachment, which is the eve of their building. It's not the building itself, it's just the eve of the building. And then we get to the Annapolis Quay property, the property that's, and then the eleven parking stalls that are in front of Whiskey Gulch, the Kitson Transit property, which is next door, and the three stalls that would go away and will acquire property from Kitson Transit.
And if I could elaborate very quickly, so when we get past the, those initial buildings, we're able to slide the cap, just like on the Marley. We didn't make the Marley remove the twenty-foot of the building that was in the right-of-way. We had the ability to go past, we just had to clear that. They had to purchase and the city had to vacate. This is the same scenario. We're getting past those buildings with no impact to the buildings or the parking. The only reason that we have an impact on Annapolis Quay is as you move towards Kitson Transit and you get to, Retsal Road comes down, there's a very substantial hillside which if we were to try to move into the right-of-way, now you're, you know, you're spending millions of dollars on a wall that's directly to the Retsal Veterans Room. That's why the trail in that area is shifting onto the Annapolis Quay property. It is the cost of that and the expense of a hundred-foot tall wall.
This time I'd like to move to, there's a funding chart that's in your packet. And so the third column over, I'd just like to point out the, all of the awards we have to date, which is a little more than eight million dollars, that we have an award for this project. Funding that we've spent to date is a little over three million dollars, which is a one, two, three, what, by six column over. Then we have remaining funding available, which is three point nine million dollars. If we were to not build our prospectus, the ferry dock to ferry dock, fourteen-foot wide pathway, we would be likely subject to repayment of that two point, one point two million dollars. We could ask for forgiveness, but there's no guarantee that we would receive that forgiveness from the federal government. So if you add what's remaining and what we would have to pay back, the net loss to the city would be over five million dollars. So with that, that ends my presentation to the city council. If I've got questions for myself or staff, I'll do my best to answer.
I'd like to say thank you to staff and I know as a council member that wasn't around when a lot of this timeline happened, it's been, it's been great to kind of go through and get that history lesson. Hopefully that the audience here today and the audience that are reading on the website here tomorrow would also get gathered that same appreciation. A lot has happened and it's great for us to, one of the latecomers that will hear when all this happened, and I don't think this was a matter of lack of transparency, I just think it happens to be, you know, this didn't really, doesn't seem to have a lot of conflict back in the day and I think the city council at the time acted appropriately. And I think it may be why our city councils, since my three and a half years of being on the council, haven't heard anything until a month ago. And obviously, once we heard from the concerned citizens a month ago, we immediately built into this and I think this was the necessary first step is to really understand, I know for myself to understand where we've been before we can determine, you know, a path moving forward, if that includes any sort of deviation. So thank you.
I got a few questions.
Okay.
So I sent some questions in. And I just want to be clear that the way I frame these questions doesn't necessarily imply my position on some of these questions, but they're just questions that have been asked of me and so I've asked them of staff.
Yeah.
No, sorry. So then this question is from Mark. Is there a possibility that we can terminate the project prior to Annapolis at a logical spot? And what does that look like from a traffic engineering perspective where you've got a terminus of a pathway short of where it's supposed to go?
Right, I mean, there's a lot of implications, two primary. One implication is that, and other jurisdictions have fallen into this, where you need to complete the prospectus. And if you come up an intersection short or a hundred feet short, you're not completing the prospectus. So there's a risk that if we did that, we would have to get FHWA approval beforehand and there's a very good chance that they'd say, no, you're either finishing the project or you're not. The other side to that is if you have bikes and pedestrians that are, you know, and the segments that we've built are extremely busy, you know, that you just were to stop and now you're stopping kind of arbitrarily onto a narrow two-foot shoulder or parking, you know, with that conflict, there's a certain liability of doing that and I don't think, I don't think that would even get approved. So, you know, completing the project, it's really, we either need to complete the project or repay the money with the potential to get some sort of percentage reduction for while we've constructed. To me, those are the only two options.
Okay. So one of the concerns I've heard from talking with people are concerns about the elevation and distance to the front doors and we've got a better picture of that, I think, with respect to potentially distance from the pathway to front doors, although it's hard to imagine that looking at these drawings. But one of the other concerns was the elevation of the pathway as it would sit in front of Whiskey Gulch's front door. And are you able to articulate what that would look like?
Well, so what we did in two thousand, I can't remember, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, the city had met with Annapolis Quay and an attorney. We talked about at the time, the right-of-way that was needed and then the temporary construction easement. And the temporary construction easement is just that it's, you have the permanent acquisition for right-of-way or easement and the temporary construction easement gives you that latitude to make those vertical adjustments. to make those vertical adjustments. When we met, and the follow-up to that meeting is that the city provided CAD drawings to those representatives, because they were gonna look at, knowing that this was going through there, and that the current property line was at the back of the stall, they were gonna look at what modifications needed to be done to make this work, and they were gonna get back to us, and the city was going to then look at, from a design perspective, what we could do within our, you know, legal constraints to accommodate that, but we never heard anything back.
So, we don't know yet what that would look like?
Yeah, I think it's all very feasible, because you're talking about, you know, the pathway that's almost twenty feet from the front door, and you're talking about, you know, ramping down.
Mm-huh, mm-huh.
So, I don't see anything that's, you know, not feasible. And so, you have the ability to get from the pathway into the front of the building, and you've got the potential without parking on the west side. So, I don't see that there's a, well, I don't want to, I don't want to have an opinion.
Okay. So, one of the other things I heard is that, and this goes to the whole communication thing, that admittedly, we can do better. But one of the questions is, what's the process and the timeframe for advising on construction schedules and those related issues as the project sits today?
The best way to answer that is to bring up the most recent projects that we've done. So, the city, the city can only complete the right-of-way phase, and as a, as a result of the right-of-way phase, we will make final adjustments to the construction plans, whether we're changing anything, and we go through that. Once we have possession, we have certification, we are now legally able to advertise that revised set of plans. Once we advertise, we then have a construction contract that's out, we issue a contract, and at that point, that project becomes the contractor's. And so, on the Tremont project, whether it was us and our, because it was federal, and this is federal, we would actually have a construction administration team like we did on Tremont, and we paid three million dollars for that, two years. It's their job to work with the community and the contractor, but the contractor owns the road, the traffic control, the phasing, the different traffic, you know, detours, and the schedule. And, you know, as much as there were some businesses at times, and I, I gotta say that, you know, for two years of construction, I only heard from one business a number of times. But, you know, we made it through that with, you know, just saying, this is our schedule, these are our detours, and they would say, hey, the city, you need to do this, that, or the other, and my response would be, we don't own that, we don't control that. It's the contractor's legal worksite. And so, to answer your question is, once we've advertised and turned it over to the contractor, it is, you know, we're working in our right-of-way or within our easements in which we possess, and we don't control their work, we can't dictate their work.
I think I better answer your question. Our funding window is twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-two. So, we have a funding window we need to work within, and that's why we've re-engaged the right-of-way agent, because between now and twenty, twenty-one, we need to get that certification of our right-of-way. So, that's why our agent is actively out trying to acquire these pieces of right-of-way.
Right. Well, we also have a ten-year, we have to have obligated our construction phase, final construction phase, within ten years of when we obligated the right-of-way phase, and that was in two thousand and thirteen. So, we have to have obligated and advertised for the construction, final construction phase prior to July of two thousand and twenty-three.
So, can I jump in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Quick question. So, what I'm hearing is, right now, is that you just said that we have to obligate, but construction doesn't need, can be completed till twenty twenty-three.
We have to, we have to advertise.
We have to advertise, okay.
So, we have, before you can advertise, before you advertise, you have to, you have to get washout approval through an obligation process, and you submit a funding package with all sorts of documents, certification of right-of-way, approval of construction plan, and there's a number of, in the Washington Local Agency Guideline Manual, there's a big, huge list of things that we have to do to obligate. Once you get the obligation package approved, then you can advertise. So, that has to be done before June, July of two thousand and twenty-three. We already have the funding, it's the connecting Washington funds.
And we have federal money for right-of-way.
For the right-of-way, yeah.
I have a question. It sounds like, once the construction is underway, you're saying it's the contractor's responsibility or area, and we can't tell them how to communicate to the community their impacts.
Correct.
If that's the case, can we require that they communicate impacts to the community so they can plan ahead if they need to deviate their schedules or relocate?
We did with the Tremont project.
Yeah.
We had a, Tremont had a timeline communication with property owners.
So, we can ask them to communicate to businesses?
Yeah, we do. We, we, we require that they publish a project schedule.
Okay.
Then, on top of that, then they have the, they call it the three-week look-ahead, and so, every Tuesday, we met, we went over the three-week look-ahead, that then, that was then sent to Janine, Janine put it on our website and, and different, and then there were, you know, certain phases in which the contractor and the CACM team then went door-to-door with door hangers and had meetings when we were gonna change gears from phase one to phase two, or, so, we're not saying that we're not just sitting back and say, hey, build it. What we're saying is, is we don't control. Right?
But we could have.
We have, we have.
We could make suggestions or requirements or.
We absolutely do. We have influence on it.
Okay.
At the end of the day, I can't tell the contract, like.
Well, you could.
No. The mayor, a good, perfect example, the mayor wanted to open up Tremont between the two roundabouts for months and months, and the contractor said.
Chris Henry wanted to do an article one day about the flagger that was waving everybody, and I talked to the construction manager about, hey, can, you know, can we interview this guy? And what did we get told, Chris? Nope. So, you know, it's their project, it's their employees, and I, you know, we don't have a lot of authority over it.
Right. And it all has to meet the federal guidelines. You know, the, at the end of the project, you have to do a review process, a single audit, and we're, on the Tremont, we're talking, you know, a van full of boxes that are being reviewed right now.
So, I do have a couple more questions. What would it look like to go over water near or around Annapolis Quay?
Well, I think I, I spoke to them. You know, that, we have the drawing up there.
I, I don't mean what would it look like, like that, but what's, what would the process?
It's.
How far out would we be extending the process?
Yeah, I already mentioned that. We'd have to have a VCP through Department Ecology, Commitment, Timeline, then we'd have to have the easement, you know, processed and possessed. During that same time, we'd probably do a concurrent process with WashDOT, the Environmental Group, going back through the ECS and the APE and the ECS, all that work, and then we'd be going back through our city shoreline master program. You know, it could add a year and a half.
That's if there's no litigation related to any of those.
Right. Because, because remember, we got through the previous shoreline with no comment, so that's a significant piece, because what that means is, when we went through the shoreline development master, substantial shoreline development permit, we had our CIPA, we had our NEPA, we had what they call the Joint Aquatic Resource Protection Act, the JARPA, that goes out to the Corps of Engineers, Coast Guard, National Marine Fisheries, the tribes, ecology, every state and federal agency, we received, you know, the Coast Guard. We received no comments. We only received, the only comments we got at the hearing were positive, because they were looking at the overwater homes that basically are old creosoted pilings and shading in the nearshore habitat. They were, quite honestly, ecology, fish and wildlife, and the tribes were extremely happy with the prospect that this overwater shading in the nearshore habitat was gonna be going away as a mitigation. We have two to one mitigation on this project. What we're adding in light transmitting or HDP or concrete piling is half of what we're removing on creosoted and non-light transmitting shading and piling.
And I recall Bremerton had a hard time with their.
The board law.
Yeah, with the tribes, yeah.
Yeah, just for that. So, we, we have the support to do that.
And then, my last observation, and then I'll be quiet, is on, on page eight of our plans up here, there's a little text box in the lower right corner that says, the alternative parking layout would provide thirty-one, currently it's about thirty-five. But that presumes that you would be very, you'd be almost completely successful in an, maybe Nick, an eighty percent variance on the shoreline buffer. And that's, I think that's, that's perhaps tough to do, so if you realize that you might get fifty percent buffer, you would still lose perhaps an additional four or six.
Well, there's, you also have to realize that the homes that we purchase through the relocation app, they receive just compensation for the home for relocation, they receive just compensation for the loss of a parking stall. So, just compensation is the legal term for the monies that we paid out on Tremont and Bay Street whenever we're taking or possessing for a project. So, you know, it isn't like, we're just gonna do, I think there's a misconception or misunderstanding that when we do eminent domain, we just say, hey, we're taking it, and that's not the case. When we buy a home, we pay for the appraisal, we pay for the closing costs, we pay for relocation of businesses, relocation of the individuals, in the case of the one renter, the two renters, three years of rent. You know, so, the just compensation packages are significant, because there is, it came out of the fifties with what they called environmental justice, back when the state used to build freeways through the middle of the lower, you know, the, you know, the challenging parts of town, and they just moved people out of the way, say, over both freeway.
I guess, Mark, I just want to make it clear that, that even if we could do this alternative, that you still might not have the available parking that is shown here.
Right. All we did was, we just came up with a concept.
Provided a concept, yeah.
Thank you.
I have, I have two questions I would like, and I'm moving away from Annapolis a little bit, in that you mentioned the merit in the report, that we contacted, earlier this year, first part of the year, we contacted DOT about alternatives to the Jersey Barrier. Is that still, are we still working on that?
Yeah, we're still working on alternatives. We know that we couldn't do, we were hoping that we could do the cable that you see on the freeways.
Right.
That wasn't high enough, needed to be forty-two inches high. That doesn't mean we can't do a modified version of that. So, we're looking at different alternatives to the Jersey Barrier, and if we did do the Jersey Barrier, it wouldn't be a continuous Jersey Barrier. It would be a Jersey Barrier and a three-foot gap, and a Jersey Barrier and a three-foot gap, because we're wanting, we don't want to trap somebody in the pathway, you know, we want easy access in and out of the, you could have a bicyclist that's going down the road, and they suddenly decide they want to pop onto the trail, because they want to ride on the road. You know, because we designed a three-level of bicyclists, the expert that rides in the road, the intermediate that rides on the shoulder, and then the novice that rides on the sidewalk. That's how we designed Tremont as well.
My other question is about the overwater homes that are there. There were five involved, we've purchased two, and so, it's my understanding that the three that are left to be purchased are all between West Bay and the corner. What is the potential future for those homes, if, if they're not purchased?
Not very good. I confirmed with the local agency that Nick could probably elaborate on this as well. You're dealing with older homes that have creosoted piling, they're in, well, we know with Passau, it's, it's almost falling in the water. So, how is it, it was explained to me is it's highly unlikely that they would ever be able to be repaired, and they definitely never would be able to be replaced, because again, you're talking about, you know, the one caveat was, if you had an unlimited amount of money and time, so let's say you're Bill Gates, well, you could probably do it, because you're gonna hire the engineers, and you're gonna go through all the hoops, you're gonna find mitigation in the Puget Sound, I mean, that's what it's going to take, because you're talking about shading and piling, creosoted piling within the nearshore habitat, which is the most critical, and for somebody to take on mitigation and do repairs, and if the repairs exceed a certain value, which it no longer becomes a repair but a replacement, you know, if, if I were to advise any of the overwater homeowners, I'd say, look, this is your best opportunity to get the highest investment value, where you have no out-of-pocket costs, because your, your home is a, you know, there is a termination date, and that's just the reality.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple. Mine are easy. Can you explain the colors on the maps, three and four, like the blue, green, and red? Do they mean different things? Do they mean different things?
They're all just pieces of right-of-way, and we're trying to just show, show you different, you know, show them differently.
So, it's a different color for a different property?
Each one's a different property owner.
Because one of the things that struck me as unusual, and I know, we've heard a lot of unusual things, is some people are under the impression that we're going to take fifteen feet of their property. So, would it be that map that would explain which properties we're gonna take fifteen feet of?
We're not taking, the only property that we're actually going outside of our right-of-way, even on the overwater homes, we're building in our right-of-way. The reason we're taping those homes is they're built into the right-of-way, and they have structural upland connection, so that's why they become an uneconomic remnant. The only, the only property, other than that little weird triangle over by the old Blue Goose, the, the green and the blue, is, that's just a kind of an odd remnant of the old boundary that it doesn't, it protrudes out. And again, the only, the only area where we're actually going outside the right-of-way is when we get to Annapolis Quay and Kitsap Transit, because of the, the hill at Retsal. Other than that, we're building this in the right-of-way. Now, the issue that you're probably speaking to is the, you know, Haynes, Claire, Jones, Williams, they had trailers, cars, they have, they have all this use of the right-of-way, and that's.
It wasn't their property then?
It wasn't their property.
Okay.
And, and the state has repeatedly told us that you need to, you need to use your right-of-way.
They told us that because of, we go after funding from the state?
Well.
Or just in general?
Again, the perfect example is if you've driven through Balfour, and you look at the Rice Bowl, the Woodshed, all these businesses that had, you know, parking in the right-of-way, when they went and did that big widening project, there's no parking anymore, because the state used their right-of-way. You can't adversely possess public right-of-way.
Mike, I guess one last question, and I know you explained it, but I don't think I caught your explanation on map number four, the black triangle of the building. You said the building's in the right-of-way, or we're going to buy the triangle, but we're not gonna take it down?
In this case, the building is in the right-of-way, that's that triangle.
It's because of that weird.
And the green is the, is the right-of-way that we need to acquire from the same property owner. Over here, the blue is right-of-way that we need to acquire, and our pathway isn't actually that, I think part of this is the construction easement, because the pathway is the yellow or orange line, you can see the side of there, and we have the eve of the, they're, I don't know how long, you know, whether it's five or six feet, this eve that sticks out over their front porch, and when, okay, right now, you could probably ride a bicycle right underneath it, but, but, you know, the, the, the grid is like this, our pathway's gonna be leveled. It's undetermined yet whether or not this eve would need to be modified, because we can't have somebody riding along with their bicycle and hit their head, but no impact to the building. There's no impact to the building, it's just the, the corner of the eve that hangs over the, the.
And so, the building on the left, the black square, belongs to us, is in our right-of-way?
That's our right-of-way.
But we're not gonna modify the building? We don't ask? Okay.
It's just, it's no different than what we did in the Marley. Twenty feet in the Marley is in, was in the city right-of-way when we started our project, and because of this federalized process, it requires us to correct those. They have to buy that piece of property from us, and then we bought other right-of-way from them. That'll be the same scenario, they'll need to buy this triangle from us, and we'll need to buy this triangle from them, and then it cleans up the right-of-way in, in front of that, and none of that business. Is that correct? I'm not the engineer.
No.
Thank you, it's clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
Well, and, and you can see, and the reason for that is, the original plating of Port Orchard and eighteen whatever, that's a very odd angle where they're doing the inner harbor line and the outer harbor line, and, you know, somebody just drew a sharp angle, probably before the road was ever there. It was an old territorial road.
I'm probably not gonna be as elegant as my counterparts, but my understanding is basically, and, and thank you again to staff for the timeline, is that this has been going on, and we had a, essentially a pause in the project due to other projects that the city had. So, it kind of, it didn't fall into a black hole, it was just this, a time stoppage, and possibly, I think several people have talked about, how do we keep that communication going with the, with the, with the citizens? how do we keep that communication going with the, with the, with the citizens? Yeah?
The project has not stopped.
No.
We, we did, um, West Bay, we did, um, you know, across the water.
We built segments two, three, four and five during the project.
So the project has never stopped. It's just phase two, the timing of phase two was never going to happen until the other, um, the down, the basic, the downtown core.
Exactly, I mean, really, we have had, I mean, we did McCormick Village Park, we did this project, we did Tremont. We can only do so much at a time.
Right, and we've already agreed to that.
There was one key thing though, from a right-of-way, um, presence, is if you remember, we started with Universal and we had that issue where we had to terminate with Universal. That whole process with the, and, and I'll say it, my thinking that the auditor misunderstood the lag manual, because we got an audit finding and we followed the lag manual and they had an issue with the lag manual.
That's not the goal.
Well, it is, because it, it, it paused us, that right-of-way stopped for a year and a half. By the time we terminated and went back, that was the right-of-way, the presence of our agents in the field. That was that, yeah.
So, yeah, there was, there was no presence in the field negotiating on this right-of-way on this segment, but we worked on it actively.
Yeah.
Okay, and that, that's fair, okay, that's, that's fair.
And I would like to add, it was just the process alone had a lot of issues. I know negotiating the easement, West Bay Shopping Center, something where, uh, the whole, our deal with dealing with the Quincea Berry, uh, property took time. The negotiation with Quarter River to, to determine the, the pathway along through the park was another issue that, those were all steps to this project that took a fair amount of time to complete, you know, by themselves, so.
Yeah, I had a time sheet, I, I've been non-stop on this on Tremont, you know, pretty continually.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to infer that we had stopped on this project. It was just that the, some of the momentum had been shifted, perspective, right?
It had stopped because we weren't actively trying to acquire that right-of-way, but we were working on other aspects of the project.
So I've got two, two more to go with. Uh, one is, what is the timeline that we would need to, I mean, you talked about the advertising and going for construction. What is the, is there kind of almost a drop dead quarter that we need to acquire all the properties by? To, to get this, you know, so there's no loss of funding?
Ideally next year.
Okay, so, so through twenty twenty. So we have, we have some time to not play with, but to move forward with.
Yeah, we, I do not wanna go into twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Cause again, we have to obligate, we have to advertise for the construction by July of twenty twenty-three.
And my last one, uh, mayor is for you, is, uh, you read a very passionate email, uh, earlier tonight that was pretty forward-thinking, uh, from how the city's trying to move. Do we know, can we know who that's from or if it's anonymous, it, it should remain anonymous?
I'd rather not reveal that. And if anybody wanted to make a comment on this request, I would, you would have to disclose that.
There's an email address attached.
Okay, uh, can we get, can we get a copy or do we have to?
I will share.
Okay.
The city council, but the public would need to make a public record.
It's part of the public record.
It is part of the public record.
Okay, yeah, no, it was, it was a little forward-thinking email and I think we should know who said it, so, thank you.
For the Senate, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And any, as a member of public, if you'd like. Okay, any other questions?
Well, I would just add one somewhat related, uh, in the final, you know, probably before nineteen ninety-nine, a number of years ago, we completed, uh, an updated parking project. And as part of that project, we surveyed anyone, yeah, parking, anyone in the city that was willing to fill out the survey. And one of the number one things that came out of that survey from the community was better access to the waterfront. And that was kind of, certainly it was in my mind when we started talking about this whole, potentially path or slip that in line with the community, the number one idea at that time was just better access to the waterfront.
Understand?
And, and we have an entire, I mean, there's, you know, I, I only presented about five, two pages, there's ten pages of this plan set. And we put the entire ten pages out on the website, so hopefully tomorrow, um, that timeline, the linear one, the one I spoke to tonight, so we'll get all this information on our website. Not tomorrow, but on today.
Great.
So it should be a big deal.
So in the spirit of communication, I think that's a great start. Would this be a, uh, website that carries on so that people can be aware of what we are?
Yeah, we can, just like we did with Tremont, we can make a button on our webpage and we'll have all these pertinent documents on the button on the webpage. Not a problem. That, that might take a day or two, we, we will get it posted, by the way.
I guess I have one question in this project, and as we move this forward, I don't know if the design is completed yet, but we're not proposing to block any access to, for example, that parking lot between the, the east and Annapolis, you're still getting access to the parking lots from there.
All the parking lots will have full access, even as we go past the, the four-plex. The end of those parking stalls will be right at our pathway. So if you've ever walked or ran or rode a bike on Burt Gilman, you've got a lot of the Burt Gilman that's exactly like that. It's not ideal, but, you know, when you get in these residential areas, you don't have a choice. So you will have cars that will be going onto the path and parking into the stalls and backing about in, or backing back out, but we're not, other than the Annapolis Quay eleven stalls, there's no other, uh, impact to parking, to driveways.
Anything else? Okay, we're gonna move on to our third items, third item, Mr. Bond. It's, uh, we have the speed limits and the chief reporting today, he would like the speed limit to be ten miles an hour. Everywhere in the city, it's much easier to enforce.
Just, we're gonna block it off, we'll be all walking down.
Yes, he's preempted my, my presentation.
That was it, we're done.
As you remember, in June, at the work-study meeting, we brought forward a updated speed limit resolution. We thought we were going to bring it forward for adoption at the very next meeting. And after further consideration with the public works director and the attorney, and after consulting a few other jurisdictions, uh, in our area, we determined that we did in fact need to have an engineering study prepared to, to change speed limits, uh, from what they were. A lot of the changes that were in the resolution were just reflecting what we had to annex, uh, a, a number of years back, which had not been incorporated into our speed limit resolution. But we, we did go ahead and commission a speed limit study from our on-call consultant, TSI. And they came back, uh, their old Clifton Road recommendation matched our recommendation of thirty-five miles an hour. But on Glenwood, Sedgwick, from the West City Boundary to Sidney Avenue Southwest, they recommended thirty-five miles an hour, we had been proposing thirty. And so their engineering recommendation is obviously what we should, we should follow in that case. And then on Sidney Road Southwest, um, we had, uh, had a mix of thirty and thirty-five, depending where on that stretch you were, they're recommending thirty for the entire corridor. And so that's slightly different than what we had proposed before. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Um, initially, I didn't think there was gonna be room on the work-study agenda, so I emailed this to you, but I wanted to give you a chance to talk about it before you see it, uh, next week.
So it's really just three speed limit changes in the city?
And, and a bunch of cleanup from things that are already posted that just weren't in our resolution before.
Nothing here surprises me. I, I tell you, I would, I would, there's nothing that doesn't justify it, but I was surprised at how much on Old Clifton, the number of accidents, uh, above average. And, uh, you know, way above average and, you know, same way with the Sedgwick side, but, you know, that's not surprising either, uh, considering that, but we travel that a lot. So, I, I mean, my, I, I'm good with moving forward on all the changes. Even though to the chief, it's not ten miles an hour, so I, you know.
Just step in the right direction.
All right, other comments, questions? We'll get the speed on the agenda next week, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we are, that's the last of our business items. We're gonna head into executive session, we're gonna start in fifteen minutes. We're switching to RCW twenty-two, point three oh, point one one oh, uh, regarding, uh, existing and potential renovation. I think we've got three subjects, so we'll be in fifteen minutes. The fact, uh, uh, the meeting isn't adjourned, but we won't be coming back out and discussing the right of the season. So I would propose a five-minute break.
Thanks, that was a good, good comment. Thank you. We just, yes, we didn't.